It's a good one.
How are you?
I'm doing good.
We have handouts up there.
We changed.
Um, I had help setting up today, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's totally fine, yeah.
We kind of like, like, we'll never have.
Yes, yes.
Do you have the zoom? Do you have the zoomer?
No, I wasn't on the end about four times.
But you have someone actually that is paying or you're just in case of problems?
We always want to keep that for what, for what.
But you don't have a board like what I have.
Not those numbers.
Who's they, Sam?
Sam's.
So, um, so who do you want to hear?
Um.
Do you need to stay on?
We're still waiting for Wayne. Wayne was gonna come, so we can maybe wait. Are you okay waiting a minute for Wayne?
Do you need the TV on for Zoom?
Oh, yes, that would be great.
So I just started it.
Okay.
You wanna test it and make sure you're all set?
Recording in progress.
Oh, it's on.
Oh, window.
Oh.
Wait with the, um, um.
Exactly.
I do.
There you go.
I'm gonna get a sable ice cream.
I'm gonna buy you a ice cream. I'll teach this thing.
Yeah.
Wack it. So.
Pretty good to get the.
Not doing much. It's not a good sign.
Well, we're seeing here.
This issue.
No, that issue.
It is actually bothering me, I'm not actually talking to anybody.
Right.
I think that, I wasn't sure we did that. But I thought we did, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Right, we did.
Yeah. We didn't, I guess we. I mean, but when we look at the change, I guess it's.
Which more, this year.
That's it, just that one thing. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Whatever, but where's what we did before.
That's it better than here. Yeah. But the, the one change.
It's, it's this year, I guess. The exchange, if we reserve, so nine years is nine years. That's the part that's.
We're not, we can't even, that's not.
Okay, so now I'm just. Should be good.
Uh.
We see.
It's just blinking white and it's.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not. Switch to the new version.
Sure.
Yeah, you do.
Change things up. Yeah, keep it outside our towels.
Sitting next to the ball, so.
I don't even know if there's anyone on there, George, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Sam was, he wanted to change.
Well, nobody people will ring to yell, oh, to watch from, uh, remotely.
I mean, participate.
Participate.
I'm yelling, right?
I know, we have a problem with that sometimes, trying to make it work. It's not, the video, everything in here is being to Zoom, it's just, we're gonna get it up to the screen so they can see if it can, if there are. Yeah, we put it up because of it.
All right.
We need your pet knife.
Oh, what is that saying? I have a question.
They're, they're, we hear it.
Yeah.
There are, we had.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and we have.
Yeah. There's a lot of questions.
Okay.
For, not so many questions for, uh, the content of the question.
Okay.
Um, you know, one of the things I've been wanting to ask, we, that I want to keep out in your. More, it's not a issue. But you never was here now.
You know, we used to do it, but we're not sure.
That makes it, they want to, it makes things cheaper, but do you think it's.
Carolyn?
Yeah, we're good, we're on the.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you're good.
Welcome to, uh, tonight's planning board meeting. Uh, today is Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. And I'll call to order. Item one, information exchange.
So, information exchange, um, I think the only thing I'll give you guys a heads up on is on Tuesday, October eleventh. The town council is going to have a public workshop, which is going to pertain to the downtown Freeport vision and implementation goals and priorities. Um, everyone will be invited to attend. We're finalizing the invitation now, but just want to give you a heads up.
Tuesday.
That's gonna be before the meeting, like, six to.
Um, it's gonna start at six PM. They don't have a meeting that night. I would say, plan on six to eight. There's no definite end time. I'll remind you again next week, but I know it's a busy time of year, so just wanted to get that out there so you can save the date if you want to attend. Um, and then the only other thing is just, I want to thank you guys.
Just one more sentence, is there, are there goals for that workshop?
Yes, good question. So the implementation task force, as we've talked about, has been meeting regularly, and there was a list of, like, eighty goals and projects, and they've narrowed them down to about a dozen or so, and so we're gonna present those, have people kind of answering questions as to how we got to that point. You know, we tried to set goals and priorities that were already on the horizon, and then some things might not have made the list because they were already underway or already being done or already worked on, but it'll be a good snapshot. It's gonna be interactive for like a half an hour, and then you can share your thoughts with the council as they decide what's really important to prioritize, you know, especially with limited resources, like, time and money, as we go forward. And then I just wanted to thank you guys. We tried to give everyone the month off. It didn't work quite as planned. Um, Peter had asked, you know, if the planning board could meet to look at something because of the way the council's schedule falls, if we had waited to your October meeting, and then we have elections, and then they have an organizational meeting, nothing could really get before the council till December. Uh, we have a property owner, um, who, this application tonight impacts, but it's not just one order. This is something that has been flagged by the code officer as an issue for other property owners and keeps coming up. So thank you for having an extra meeting this month.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Uh, all right, item two. This is the public hearing. Proposed amendments to section two oh two D, nonconforming lots of record of the Freeport zoning ordinance. Something we might discuss, or just?
Yeah, I'll just give you a little introduction. Um, so first off, one thing to note, which I think you could note if this, you have a hearing and you take action tonight. This was done in the current version of the ordinance, but as you know, we've looked at this section a few times recently, and so last week, the council approved other amendments to the nonconforming section. Um, so if you approve the amendments tonight, I think you'd want to just clarify in a motion that this change only applies to this one item, and it should be incorporated into the recently.
Into the updated.
Yeah, the updated language. Um, the language that they just approved was when you can add on to buildings, the nonconforming structure with regards to um, space and bulk. Um, so what you have before you tonight is a standard regarding nonconforming lots. So a nonconforming lot, typically, we think of it as a lot that predate zoning. You know, your lot's been there since before nineteen seventy-six. Predate zoning, so you might not have, say, like, two and a half acres in the rural zone, or the lot frontage, or whatever the requirement may be. It could also, you know, be a lot that becomes nonconforming because standards change. For example, we have old subdivisions, like, at our webster and desert and Merrill, there's acre lots now out there. We require two and a half acres, but they were approved under old subdivision regulations. So they're considered legally nonconforming because they were permitted at one point in time, but don't conform today. So, if you have somebody that has a nonconforming lot, as long as that lot stays as is, as it existed before it came into nonconformity, it's legally fine to stay there. The second you change that, it becomes a new lot, and then it's no longer, you know, legally nonconforming. So if I had a lot today that, in the rural zone, it would have to be two and a half acres, it was an acre, I decided I want a little more land because I wanted to put in a pool, so my neighbor sold me half an acre, I wouldn't be able to do it because once you mess with the boundaries and record a new deed, you're no longer legally existing, you know, predating zoning. But then you wouldn't conform because you wouldn't meet the two and a half acres. So essentially, what you would create today would be a violation. Um, so in this case, we.
Hadn't increased the problem.
Right, yeah.
Made the problem slightly less.
Yeah, so our code officer did flag this. We did look around. Um, Wyndham was a town that had it. We did run it by the town attorney. In the land use world, we always love to bring people into conformity. Um, we don't like nonconformies. They thought that, you know, it made sense, as long as they're not creating any new nonconforming situation. So as long as you're heading towards conformity, she thought it would be okay, but you can't change your lot and then do something else that will make you become nonconforming. Two comments we received after the language was circulated. Um, we've been trying to do ordinance cleanup. Sam had submitted something in writing, just a tweak in the wording in this language, which would really change a his to a their. That language is before you, we could insert that. And the code officer asked that, at the end of the language, number, at the end of number three, we insert, this does not apply to lots in the shoreland zone, which is fine. We, you all know, we have the separate shoreland zoning now ordinance, so it's a given, but I think it's just a added protection for clarity, so if the board's okay with that or wants to consider it, those would be two changes.
So would it be in this, uh, in three, right here at the end, what we're.
Yeah.
Right, it would just say, it'd be another sentence, this does not, uh.
This law, or this does not apply to lots in the shoreland zone. And then Sam's was under.
Is that because they can already do it?
Um, they have their own provisions in the separate shoreland zoning.
So they fall under shoreland zones.
Yeah, they fall under shoreland zoning.
And, but it's already taken care of.
Yeah, they have.
Doesn't this entire document no longer apply to shoreland zones? The entire document?
Um, no, so you have, like, the, this is like the base document for the underlying zone, and then, like, in the shoreland area, it kind of adds another layer on top. It's just for clarity, so that someone doesn't take this and be like, oh, I can do this here, where DEP has separate regulations and minimums that they made us incorporate in the shoreland zone that are already in place today. And then Sam's change, I think, would be, um, under number two. And it would be the last sentence. He suggested that you change owners or their predecessors.
That should just be by claim.
Pretty basic, yeah.
It just pluralizes the owners. That's all it does.
Yeah, and changes it, the gender reference.
Yep.
Um, and then this is a public hearing tonight.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to open the, the hearing if you, you folks are, unless you want to talk about this some more.
Are we supposed to talk about this first or after we listen to the public?
Either way.
Because I have, certainly have a question.
It looks like you have eager public, but yeah, we can do either. We can answer questions.
Then.
Unless they want to respond to.
All right.
Would have to have the motion to open the hearing.
Well, could I, I think I should ask my question just in case the public is part of the response. Because the part I don't understand, and maybe there's an example, is how a property could be divided and not increase the nonconformity. So it was, that was the part that I sort of, the, the rest of it didn't have it be altered, but that makes, we already saw the sense of that.
I guess, you know, if I try to think of a situation where.
I know, if it has excess land, but it's only has two hundred feet of road frontage, but it has rear land, it's divided to sell to the abutter, and therefore.
Gotcha.
Kicks in.
But because they're not changing the frontage.
Exactly.
If that's the nonconformity.
That's the norm, exactly.
Right, I gotcha.
Or in the ca, or the case of adding land, or somebody could add road frontage. I mean, there's different ways they could.
I mean, the, the premise of this makes sense, right? It's.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, all right, motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Thanks, board. Uh, Peter Joseph, town manager, for anyone watching, uh, from home, uh, and thank you so much for meeting. I know you guys plan to take it off. Um, this gets it in front of the council two to three months earlier for people who are looking to do applications, so it's really appreciated, you guys going on your way to help them. Uh, that was all my fault, too. Caroline tried to get me not to do it, but, uh, when we put the schedule up and realized what the council's schedule looked like, she reluctantly agreed to to, uh, to try to get you guys together. This one, we think, is really simple. It's catching a lot of people who think they're trying to do the right thing by decreasing their nonconformity, and they're actually eliminating their lot of record status. Um, we've got legal opinions going back. I've got one here in front of me from two thousand and four, from the various town attorneys that they've advised um, code officers in the past, and the current code officer, if any of the dimensions change on a lot, I'll just read, this is the two thousand and four email, the oldest one we could find. It says, what gets grandfathered under the ordinance are the dimensions, they're referring to the dimensions in the registry. The ones shown on the recorded deed or map at the time of the ordinance, at the time that the ordinance makes the lot nonconforming. If those dimensions are changed, it no longer qualifies as a lot of record. So it's, there's nothing that's prohibiting us under law from putting this in our ordinance. It's just Freeport never has. A lot of municipalities have this provision. It makes sense, in my opinion. And that's it. We wouldn't make anybody inconvenienced any neighbors by having a, a nonconformity increase next to them. It would just, I think the, the example you gave, Mr. Vice Chair was perfect. If you have a hundred acres and you don't have lot frontage, and you want to sell ten acres of your backland to a neighbor, you've just created a violation. But you still have ninety acres of land, and the same two hundred, or the hundred feet of road frontage, whatever it is that created the violation. Um, we have an applicant who may choose to talk to you, um, tonight, I'm not sure, um, but they increased their lot, so they actually own closer, they own more land, but not, uh, but not enough to make it conforming. So they've decreased, they've actually decreased the nonconformity.
Right.
But it's a violation now. So this would stop that from happening in any future things, and I just think the shoreland thing, just to elaborate a little bit on that, we, we have received guidance that the state would not accept on the shoreland zoning thing. Um, it, the main way it comes into effect with shoreland zoning is somebody that doesn't own the correct frontage or acreage on the water, but has backland that's on the same parcel, dividing that creates a problem, and the state, the current opinion of the state under shoreland zoning regs is that continues to be a problem. So that's why we can't apply this to the shoreland zone. Um, so it's like if you have, use the forty acre, instead of road frontage, if you have a hundred feet of, or fifty feet of waterfrontage, a parcel that goes down to a narrow point, you still can't divide your back forty acres that are upland, um, because it creates a problem down. You don't have the adequate frontage, and now you have too small of a lot, or something like that. So that's the thing, that's something that's gonna need to be worked out at the state level, either through them acknowledging that, or maybe it'll stay like that forever, but we don't have any say over that, so. But we do for everything else outside of the shoreland zone, and that's why we're proposing this, so. Thank you.
With me is open? I'll speak to it. That's the turn here this evening, so. My name's Scott Poole, and I live at fifty-five Baker Road, and, um, thank you very much for meeting tonight. Um, we're one of those, uh, households who have a nonconforming lot, and, um, as Peter had, uh, mentioned, um, we bought less than a quarter of an acre next to us, added it to our property, which is roughly about just under an acre, and now we're in a nonconforming situation because we've added to the lot, and, uh, we have a situation where we have a campground going in right next to us, okay? It's been expanded on the Baker Road, and there's a road that is now facing towards our home. There's a new road coming out to the, uh, main road on the Baker Road, and then, um, there's gonna be plans to actually have RVs that are gonna be along our property line, okay? So we made a deal with the property owner next door, thinking we were becoming more conforming, uh, made a deal on the property, and, um, have looked to relocate our garage and turn our garage so that it's, you know, blocking the campground from our house, and the lights aren't gonna shine in. And we were denied, you know, or told that we weren't gonna get a permit, um, because we now are a new nonconforming lot, and so, um, it doesn't, I'm still very confused why, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because we've become more conforming, and I'm not sure how that becomes a problem, uh, when you become more conforming, so, um, so that's a problem that we're faced with, and I wanted to just speak to that briefly tonight. It sounds like people, um, and the board understands the, um, the issue that's at hand, so again, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do with anyone online, or?
Um, we do have Sam Kapala online. I'm not, I believe he might be just listening in as a member of the public tonight, but if he wants to comment, he can raise his hand. There is no hand raised on Zoom.
Um, well, all right, well. Motion to close the, the me, the public meeting?
Public hearing?
Public hearing, thank you. It's pretty straightforward to me.
Vote on closing that public hearing?
Uh, aye.
Oh, closing.
I don't think we, we didn't vote on opening the meeting either, so, uh.
Yes, we did.
I saw a couple hands raised.
Yeah, we did, we did. We might have.
Just waved.
To note it was unanimous, both ways.
Please, yes.
The minutes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. You tell us my first meeting. Um, yeah, it's pretty straightforward to me, so I, I, I don't really have any questions or issues with this. I don't know if you folks do or want to.
I do. So, uh, Peter, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The, what issue you just raised about shorelands, um.
Yep.
The example you gave was about subdividing the back forty. And, uh, but what if it was the reverse, this couple's situation, where they wish to, in shoreland, if they wish to purchase the adjacent lot, and they still wouldn't have as much frontage as they should have, but they got a little bit more land, would that be a problem for shoreland as well? Do you know?
Go ahead, Caroline, because there.
Prefer not to get into the shoreline because it's super confusing, and we had to work with the attorneys
and the attorney general to get some special language added into our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, all I'll say is, we did get, we did get special language put in, that's a variance. I'm using the word variance, just, it varies from not the legal definition of variance. We got language in our zoning, our shoreland zoning ordinance that varies from the state regs for special circumstances, so I'm not sure how that would apply.
It doesn't really matter, though. This isn't applicable to the shoreland zone.
No, no, the reason I'm asking is because I don't have any trouble with the part of adjusting the property line. It's the subdividing that is giving me pause.
But, but again, this is only for, this is not applicable to shoreland.
This is, I'm, I'm offshoreland. I was using that as an example, trying to figure out was the objection there only about the, the, the dividing, or was it about the.
No, it would be, the issues in shoreline are usually just any dimensional issues, so frontage, lot frontage, um, on the water, the, the, essentially, the width of the lot, like, not having.
It's irrelevant. I think they're right, that it's irrelevant, so I don't want to go down that road further. I'm trying to.
We could have a long, we could probably have a long office conversation about that, if you want to stop in, and we could.
Yeah.
Because there's, there are a myriad of restrictions in shoreland zoning that a lot of people don't like and shave at, so.
So Mitch, to rewind and forget you said the shoreline words.
I withdraw.
Is your concern, is your curiosity more like, is this gonna open opportunity for people to cut off back portions of their lot? Is that kind of where you're?
I mean, that's the one, the first example, it seems like an open-shut case. There'd be no reason whatsoever for anyone to have an objection to that.
Yeah, the other.
But I'm trying to imagine, is there an objection? So you have a, a lot that's got two, I mean, I don't know, what are the things that make a lot nonconforming? Too small, too little frontage. Are those the only?
Those are probably the two most common things. I mean, you could have, like, a impervious area nonconformity. The two examples where I think come to mind of things I'm seeing over the years are, one, the example given to us by Mr. Poole, and the other example I see is when somebody, you know, well, you guys just changed the language, but, you know, people that have had nonconforming structures in the past and couldn't get a variance, if they were short, they might want to go to their neighbor and get a little sliver of land and add it to their lot, and they wouldn't have been able to do it under the provision we have today. Those are, like, the honest answers to that. I think the way we're gonna see it.
It provides people flexibility without all of a sudden having their home be nonconforming.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't understand, you know, yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Nonconforming status.
Right.
Which we don't want them to do.
Exactly. We want, we want conformity.
Well, well, we don't want, well, we want, it's, it's all right to incre, uh, decrease the nonconformity, but he's, he, Mr. Poole is never gonna be able to come up to two and a half acres because he just can't do it.
Right.
If he buys a quarter of an acre and adds it on to his, he loses his nonconforming grandfather's status, and that throws him into, he can't do anything.
Can't do anything, yeah.
Well, he can leave it where it is. He can buy an extra quarter acre, but he can't do what he wants to do.
Right.
And we don't want that. In reality, the town's. Do what he wants to do within the guidelines. Exactly. Town's not gonna go after Mr. Poole and for increasing the size of his lot, but it means he can't, he's not legal, so. Legally can't do anything. But who cares about that usually more than us? It's, I, I mean, is the person who would be in the chain of, the, the chain of command for enforcing things like that, it's not something we would go after somebody for, but a bank isn't gonna care about that because, um, you know, twenty years from now, someone, you know, Scott or, uh, or his heirs and his signs, you know, go to mortgage the property or something, or go to sell it, there, no one's gonna lend against it if it's nonconforming, and the banks pick up on those things now. That's actually how we find a bulk of them, when they, they're usually underwriters for mortgage companies that bring them to us.
Exactly.
And then we get the bad news of telling people, like, oh, yeah, technically, you created a violation five years ago when you, when you went from one acre to two point four acres, but you didn't get all the way to two point five when you bought that piece from your neighbor, or something like that, so that's really, that's really where the problem is.
We did talk about it internally and with two attorneys that we use, and, you know, because we always try to look at the, the negative side, and we know that, no matter what we do, somebody's gonna take advantage of every standard, and we really couldn't come up with one. The only thing I could kind of think of is, like, the, I would say, probably extreme, but somebody's gonna do it. It's just human nature, that they're gonna split a black, back lot off to their neighbor, and then their neighbor might have enough to subdivide, but then, in which case, we have a whole separate set of subdivision standards that come into play.
That's not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be illegal. That shouldn't be illegal, because he's just buying backland that guy can't use, and then he has the road frontage to subdivide, so we, why would we want to stop that?
The only situation where that would occur really is the road frontage issue, isn't that right?
Right, yes.
Because the other one, you would be increasing the, if it's a size issue, would be increasing nonconformity by dividing it, so I think it only, uh.
That's re, yeah, that's really the only other situ, it's usually land area.
And I kind of get it.
I mean, it, it makes total sense.
There's so many nonconforming lots in Freeport left over from the sixties and seventies, where we sold half acre and one acre lots, a hundred feet on the road, or.
Yep.
You know, for years and years, it was a one acre lot.
With, I think, it was one hundred feet of frontage, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with this potential change, and, you know, Nick said to me this week, he's like, wow, that, the action the planning board and council just take, people are really happy because there's been people for years who have been calling us and be like, I want to add on, and I can't because I can't go to Board of Appeals, and I, I can't do that, so, I mean, I do truly believe that this helps some of our existing residents.
This has been an issue since two thousand and four. Is that when you read that email? Is that where that email's from?
It's been a long before. That's as far as I can prove it, but it's probably been an issue since the zoning ordinance was enacted.
Yeah, so I mean, this is something that's been needing to be addressed.
I mean, before seventy-six, we had downtown zoning, then we had rural zoning. That was it.
That was it, yeah.
That was it. Then seventy-six, we adopted the new zoning, so all the lots that were in existence in seventy-six are called the grandfathered.
Yep.
And I, I think to answer the question, it's probably few and far between where people are moving their lot lines around by buying land, but it's not unheard of. I mean, especially where you've got your, you know, your MD type of zones, where, you know, you've got much smaller zoning, and you probably could have people with small lots that could still sell a piece of land to a neighbor and not, not make theirs dimensionally a problem by going too small, but the neighbor's still, you know, if you've got like a point seven or a point four acre lot, or something like that, and you pick up a tenth of an acre, or, what was it, a point one five of an acre or something that on your lot, right?
It was about three thousand square feet.
Three thousand square feet. So he picked up the three thousand square feet closest to where the camp is, campground is expanding, figuring it would let him keep a little bit of a buffer there from the expansion, and the, both he and the neighbor were in, you know, agreement that that's a great thing to, the neighbor sold him the land, so how could it create a problem? How would the neighbor complain, the campground? Why would they complain if they actually sold him the land? It's, nobody's, in this case, nobody's gonna be angry, but it's, still needs to be cleaned up so that it's conforming in the long term, and he can get a building permits, he can move the garage if he wants to, he can do whatever he wants to do, so.
Out of all the things we've voted on, this is probably the easiest thing for me. Um, anything else? We ready to vote?
Well, you haven't made a.
Yep, make a motion to vote.
We have to include this language, too. Well, why don't we do that separately?
That's a good question.
I think, um, somebody could make a motion to accept the language as presented at the nine twenty-eight twenty-two planning board meeting with the changes presented by Mr. Kapala to change um, on D two, paragraph two, change the owner or his predecessor to the owners or the predecessors. Um, and then to also incorporate the suggestion made by the code officer to add a sentence to number three. And then, to also incorporate the suggestion made by the code officer to add a sentence to number three, that this does not apply to lots in the shoreline zone. And then so, then you'd need to add the finding how this is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
It's a lot, Wayne.
I'll give it a try. So I move that we approve a proposed amendment to section two oh two D, nonconforming lot of record of the Freeport zoning ordinance, ordinance. And that would add subparagraph number three, reading alteration of nonconforming lots, colon, a nonconforming lot legally existing at the effective date of this ordinance may be further divided or have its lot lines altered, provided that such action does not increase or extend the degree of or create any new nonconformity with regard to any applicable requirement of the zoning districts in which it is located. This provision shall not apply to lots that exist in the shoreline zone. And further, we, I propose that we add language to section two oh two D two, language that was proposed by Chairman Kapala on today's hearing date, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. So, section D two, subparagraph two, we'll read the striking owner or predecessor, I'm sorry, strike owner or his, and insert predecessor owners or their predecessors in the last sentence of that provision.
And then how does this apply to the, the overarching comprehensive plan? This has to, we have to talk about how it, how it, how it is in line with the overall town's comprehensive plan?
And, and the, the planning board determines that this, these changes are consistent with the, the town's comprehensive plan.
I think that's good.
That's good, except, yeah, I think, modify the language is, and the Sam thing, he said something about insert the language, and I think it should be modified.
I'll accept that.
Alright, ready for a vote?
Do we have a second, sorry?
Oh, second, yep.
Sure.
Alright, I'll vote.
Prove unanimously. Thank you.
We have to close the meeting, right?
You can close the meeting.
Motion to close the meeting?
Alright, thank you, everybody.
See you next week. That was.
Don't plan on next week's meeting that way.
Definitely not. That was just a little.
We haven't seen next week's agenda.